Would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all? Thank you, and welcome to the Board of Aldermen's meeting for Monday, October 7. The first order of business is minutes of the previous meeting from September 16th. Moved to approve?
Second.
Is there any changes, corrections? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. We are outside the rail. Is there anyone to address the Board on Matters not on the agenda? Your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, I'm Heather Joyason Stevenson, and I live at 210 Lincoln Avenue. And I'm here to follow up with my request for the city to look into implicit bias training for city officials. This is such an easy thing to do. And it's important because, you know, we don't know everything. And it's amazing when we start to look into the issues and realize that, oh, there's just little tiny things that we could quirk about the way we're saying things or the way we're talking to people. There's innuendos and nuances and conversations that we don't even realize that are going on. And if we just understood that, we could make everything much better and make things flow better. And this needs to come from the top down. We need our role models to be showing the rest of the community the kind of work that we need to be doing. The Vermont State Police are working on this very hard. And tonight in Burlington, John Lewis is speaking. He was a civil rights, or is a civil rights leader who participated, among other things, in Bloody Sunday, the march in Selma to get voting rights for black Americans. And he was a freedom rider. And it's really important to follow up and the work that he was doing and to show that it actually was meaningful and that we aren't going to just drop the ball on this work. So I'm hoping that you're going to continue pursuing this. And I just wanted to ask what the state of the situation is. Thank you.
Refer to committee.
Right.
Refer to the general committee.
Okay. I just want to make sure that it's going to happen sometime soon.
It would refer to general committee, so it's up to the chair when that meeting takes place.
Well, can he comment on it?
It's up to the chair to determine when the meeting will take place. Alderman Humphrey.
Thank you. I was going to bring this up on unfinished business, but thank you, Heather. So I just want to remind the chair that we also, in addition to this agenda item that we haven't scheduled, we also have another item that's not completely disconnected from this one in regards to outside council funds by the attorney. And I think it's important, if we have any intention of getting this scheduled, we need to schedule it soon because budget season is coming up. And once that is, once we've been handed the budget from the mayor, it's highly unlikely that we will find an excuse to schedule this until after the new year. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Is there anyone else outside the rail to address the board? Yes, sir. Your name and address for the record, please.
Glen Reed, 25 Killington Avenue in Rutland. And I would just like to follow up and express my support for this type of training for the board. I think it's highly important. And coming from the perspective of working for a advocacy organization for people with disabilities, I can see the intersectionality in terms of different groups and how people respond to different groups, whether it's by race, gender, sexual preference, religion, cultural disability. So I think this type of training, implied bias, anything regarding prejudices is highly important in any body, in any organization, particularly in government where you are representing a variety of different people. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else outside the rail? No, we're moving on. Communications from the mayor. Mayor Lair.
So thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. I do have two issues that I'd like to bring forward tonight, if I could. First, it is my pleasure to report to the Board of Aldermen and city residents out there watching tonight that one of our very own, April Chaffee, you may have read, from the recreation department, is being recognized by the Vermont Business Magazine as a rising star in the class of 2019. She was nominated by Kim Peters, our superintendent of REC, and other business partners here in the city or in the local area. And April will be recognized in the November issue of Vermont Business Magazine, so look out for that. I'm hearing newsstands coming out here in the next few weeks. So I wanted to publicly say congratulations to April and all the good work that she's doing, not only for the REC department but in the community as well. So that's the first thing I have. The second is you folks, the members of the board, have a memo on your desk regarding appointments to the Board of Health. And let me read the memo if I could. Dear Board, due to recent events, I've had to track down members of the Board of Health. Rutland City Charter, Chapter 29, Board of Health, has been inactive, that's inactive, for many, many years. While doing a recent search, the last time members of the Board of Health had been nominated and appointed was in the November of 2014. There is also no record of that board ever meeting. In speaking to two of the previous members who are listed on the memo here tonight, they don't, do not remember ever meeting. Two of the names coming forward are members again to be renominated, and the third one is coming forward for the first time. So therefore, I'd like to nominate the following three people to serve on the Board of Health: Courtney Collins, Mark Woodbury, and Mary Neemuth. And I ask that you table the nominations.
Move to table.
Second.
All those in favor, the motion to table, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alderman Humphrey?
Just a question for mayor. Are we going to have a chance to get contact information or residence?
I will. Yeah, try to get that out to you in the next couple of days.
Thank you.
Yep.
Certainly. Alderman DePoy.
Mr. Mayor, can you just remind us what the Board of Health is supposed to do? And I guess, if they haven't met in five years, what's their function?
I can certainly read you from the charter duties of the Board of Health. The Board of Health shall consist of the health officer, appointed for a term of three years by the state Board of Health, in this case, that's Mike Brookman, as provided by the law, and of three persons appointed by the mayor. One member shall be appointed annually for a term of three years. That's why I have those staggered in your memo before you. The Board shall hold their meetings as necessary and keep full and accurate records of all meetings and all business transacted. A detailed account of all expenditures shall be kept by said Board. It shall show at all times the amount of all indebtedness incurred under the authority of each appropriation by the use of said Board, if they spend any money. Shall be the duty of the Board of Health to see to the enforcement of all laws and ordinances related to the preservation of public health. The Board of Health shall report its doings to the mayor in the month of July of each year. Written orders of the health officers shall be enforced in a refusal or neglect to comply therewith and shall be prosecuted as provided by law.
So it's a meet as needed, I heard?
Basically, I believe that that's the way that the Board of Health has conducted over the years.
They just don't need to meet if there's no necessity?
Unless there's business before the Board. That's pretty much it.
If I may, I believe we have a health officer. If the health officer makes a decision ordering you to do X, and you disagree, the Board of Health is also the appeals board, so it just needs to be in place for some of those decisions as well.
Thank you.
Mayor Lair, anything else?
That is it for tonight.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So we do have a number of additions and deletions to the agenda. We have Tara Kelly, the planning director and zoning administrator, the Stonegate subdivision HOA vote. We also have the digester project from the Commissioner of Public Works and the report of the Finance Committee. If we could add those to the agenda, please.
So moved.
Second, any debate on the motion to add to the agenda? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you. So first up, reports and letters from department heads and officials. Treasurer Markowski, financial report for fiscal year ending June 30, 2019. Treasurer Markowski, welcome.
Thank you. I sent the report this afternoon, and I know there's a lot of material. So what it is, is the updated balance sheet, income and expense statements for June 30. And I just think it'll be handy to have as we get into budgets, and I will post it on the city website, the quarter end report, so.
So a motion to receive and file or refer to finance. Alderman, Tori.
Move to receive and file.
Second.
Any debate on the motion to receive and file? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Treasurer Markowski, request transfer sewer fund to water fund for fiscal year 19 fathom expense.
Okay, so what we're looking for here is board approval for a transfer from the sewer fund to the water fund to cover the fiscal year 19 fathom expenses in the total of $108,867.26. When we were budgeting for FY19, we didn't have the numbers for the project. We didn't sign the agreement until July of 2018. So going forward, this is going to be part of a budgeted item when we do the budget process. So this is just kind of a catch-up on 2019 expenses. Any questions on the transfer or?
So we would need to suspend the rules.
We'll just suspend the rules.
Second.
All those in favor suspending the rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Request is from sewer fund to water fund to cover the fiscal year 19 fathom expenses of $108,867.26.
So moved.
Second.
For any debate on that? Any questions of the treasurer? Alderman Mattis.
I'm just wondering, even though we couldn't budget anything, what was expected?
Well, I just looked at the meter division in water, and the budget was $428,000. The total expenses were $551,000. So we had included those expenses in the meter department. So that transfer is going to resolve that really overspending in that division, so.
Alderman, Tori.
And can you help, maybe this is a quick question for the commissioner, help us understand what that overspending was? I know we didn't know the numbers exactly then, but so, is it just that we didn't know the numbers, or are we overspent by $110,000?
Well, budget was prepared and approved prior to the contract, so we didn't know, we didn't budget for it because we didn't know we were even going to enter into a contract at the time the budget was approved. In the current fiscal year budget, all of this is accounted for. There's a transfer actually budgeted to take place at the end of the fiscal year, I assume. So the idea here is that the revenues that come in to, that are derived from meters, meter readings, are a little heavier on the sewer side than they are on the water side, but it's pretty close to 50/50. So the expenses, the question was, well, how do we account for these expenses? And we felt that the best way to account for them is to put all the expenses in the meters, water fund meters, and then do a transfer. That way, you can track them much, you're not splitting them up and dividing them and spreading them around. They're all in one place. You can see what you're spending. And then, at the end of the year, you reimburse half of that cost from the sewer fund. That's what this represents. We didn't, the, these expenses are about what we expected, even though we weren't able to budget for them. The city out-of-pocket expenses are a little below what we expected. The only ones that weren't were the change orders. So we had one change order for about $30,000, which is over and above what we had expected. So it's about $15,000 of this transfer. That's more than we would have expected had we had the opportunity to budget for it. But other than that, it's pretty much just what we were expecting to do at this point, which the city treasurer pointed out, that the overspend in the meter account is just about the same as the 50% reimbursement from sewer. So it's just about right. These are budgeted in this fashion for this fiscal year, but last year, it was basically, you know, after the fact. So we underspent a number of accounts, meter parts, which we underspent by, well, we didn't underspent it. We would have underspent it by $80,000, but because we were buying meters for this project rather than out of our operating expenses, that helped to trade those costs. In the future, we don't budget for meters we know we're not going to buy. We budget for the costs that we have under the new program.
So the motion on the floor was move to transfer the request sewer to water to cover the expenses. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. We have Attorney Blumer, executive session relating to negotiations of a REC-related contract. We'll move that to the end of the meeting. So next, we have Tara Kelly, the Stonegate subdivision. Here are welcome.
Great, thank you.
You should all have a newer packet on your desk. We got something on the air, and then we receive the packet.
So my apologies for the last minute on this. We received it on Thursday afternoon, and we're told that there's a homeowners association vote happening this Thursday night. So it was timely to bring it to you and see if you choose to take any action. At the Stonegate subdivision, which is down off of Forest Street, there's a number of properties there. The overall approval, original approval was for 61 housing units, and a portion of those have been left undeveloped all these years. So where you see Griswold Masonry, some older buildings that are there, that's part of the overall subdivision as approved on paper. So at this time, there hasn't been any active interest in developing the rest of that property, including by the developer who still owns those lands. So the last time there was interest, Carpenter and Costin had thought about doing something in 2015, but that fell apart at a certain point, and in part because it's a pretty complicated situation legally. At this point, those lands and some of the others, all the lands that are owned by the developer that were undeveloped owe back taxes to the excess of $60,000, maybe even more than that, more than $70,000. Brandon Sample, who's someone who was in that development at this point, has represented himself to us as a potential purchaser for the land and has said that he would be paying the back taxes upon taking ownership. So in that way, the city would see some benefit if the sale is completed. For that sale to happen, as in his memo to all of you and his request to all of you, he needs, he is asking the homeowners association to take two votes on Thursday night. And the reason we're involved in this vote is because we own four properties in that development. So in 2016, there was a tax sale on four of the lots, and they came into our ownership. So that makes us homeowners association voters, it appears, was an unusual position for us. And so that's something, actually, Matt's going to verify before Thursday night, that we actually have the right to vote, because I don't think we're paying in dues or anything of that nature. So we're going to make sure that's actually true. But in the meantime, presuming we are, there are two votes that are being, that are being requested that night. And so just for some additional orientation, on agenda item number one, which this is, was submitted from Brandon Sample, that shows the overall plot as approved, or plat as approved by the city. He references certain lot numbers. If you really want to get a sense of what they are, I may put in a bigger map for you at the end of the packet that's on your desk. That shows outlined, he's planning to purchase the lands that still have those large buildings on it, the large concrete buildings, and two of the house lots down on Forest Street. So that's the extent of what he tends to, intends to purchase from the original developer of the land, whose name is Griswold. He'd like to, in the short interim, as described in his memo, keep those land, those big buildings as is, and do some work that involves using them for a construction business. That'll be a decision down the line that relates to zoning that really has nothing much to do with this particular vote that you're being asked to do. But I guess it's just important context. So the first agenda item number one, he's basically asking that those lots that he'd like to purchase be no longer part of the homeowners association. So that has a lot of legal implications for him as a prospective owner. And so basically, the vote would be to withdraw everything that's circled in blue on the bigger map I showed you, which replicates what he shows you on his own map, which is much smaller. Remove those lots from the homeowners association. So that's the crux of what agenda item one is about. There's reference to common elements and an agreement to pay $100 for that land. I don't know how important that will be or not, as in the discussion on Thursday night, but what you can see within the areas that have the existing buildings on them, if you can tell, there's a small elbow of land that comes across like this and up like that. Does everyone see that shape within the house lots there? So there's a shape of land that's there that was originally conceived of as common lands. There was a transfer of property to the homeowners association, part of all the legal background stuff, prior to Brandon's interest, that transferred all the common lands, and so ostensibly could have transferred that sliver of land. And so he's saying, in his request to the homeowners association, he wants to withdraw all the land, including the sliver. And if the homeowners association wants something in return for that sliver, he's apparently offering $100 as per this memo. So that, does that give you enough information about what that agenda item number one is and what he's asking? All right, so there's, and there's a second vote. So I don't know how you want to discuss, Sharon, sorry.
Well, I think your explanation, then, will look for this to the city attorney for whatever's appropriate for motion. We'll see.
Okay, so do you want to take one agenda item at a time?
Okay, we can do this, we can do one at a time.
Okay.
So the first one, if you would just recap, the lots in particular that he wants to pull out are 32, 34, 51, and 53?
Those are the lots that we own. The ones that he's, he's taking out are lots 1 through 11 and lots 60 and 61. It's in that second paragraph under agenda item one. Those are the ones that he's planning to purchase.
Okay, and so, oh, I'm sorry, Alderman Humphrey.
So I'm, thank you. So are we essentially, well, upon Matt's approval, we're voting on how we would like you to vote to represent us at this housing authority meeting?
So. That's my take. Yes.
Madam Chair, I was going to suggest that maybe the first motion would be to authorize Tara Kelly to attend the association meeting on behalf of the city. And then, from there, you can discuss how you'd like her to vote or not vote. She might, you might ask her to abstain. That's another option, so. So the first motion would, could be to authorize Tara Kelly to attend the association meeting on behalf of the city.
Second. Need to suspend the rules?
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor suspending the rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have a motion to authorize Tara to represent us at the association, represent the city. And there was second, any debate on that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Okay, that's first.
And so, do you want me to explain both agenda items together, or take the, you know, take a?
Whatever you think will make sense to us.
Yeah, I think you may end up with different ideas on the two different items. So you may have different motions on the two different items. So that's why it's just maybe take one at a time.
Okay.
Okay. So this first one would basically be saying that we're in favor of him being able to remove these lands from the homeowners association and, and I guess, I don't know how we weigh on whether or not $100 is the right fee or not. So I guess that's maybe, might be part of someone's motion, I'm not sure.
Yeah, so maybe to put something on the table at least would be to authorize Tara Kelly to vote yes on agenda item number one as presented.
Do we have that motion? Alderman, Tori.
So moved.
Second. Alderman, Tori.
Can you briefly explain that and why that would be in our best interest?
Sure. I think because the fact that the lands have been sitting fallow, and it is about to go to a tax sale, and there's not been a lot of interest in someone taking this whole chunk more recently, and because, and the reason really is, there's a, I could spend an hour talking to you about how complicated the legal things are behind the scenes here. So he's boiled it down to what he would like to take and develop and use, and I think that in the interest of the city, putting something back on the tax rolls and into productive use is probably in the best interest.
So this will make it easier for somebody to develop that land?
This Brandon Sample is putting himself forth as that developer, and so if he's, you know, and obviously, he's intent on trying to make something happen here.
Second, Alderman, motion. We did. We had a second. Any other debate?
I have the debate, and I would like you to bring this up at the meeting. Lots 1 through 11, is this area here?
Correct.
Correct? Now, and I know the history of that property. We have a little problem with the fire department.
Yes.
Is that still going to have an easement to come all the way back around and back out again?
He's basically cut out the portion that was intended to be the continued road. And one of my big questions that night would be to listen to the conversation, figure out who, if anyone, is intending to complete that road, because we would like that to happen.
Because I would think, I think in our interest, to protect the public in there, you need it one way in, one way out, because those trucks cannot take that turn in that U section.
You're right about that.
Okay, so the motion is to approve. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay?
Okay. And then, item two, I'm honestly, personally, a little bit less comfortable with, because I'm not quite sure what is being asked. So it's asking the homeowners association to approve a global release of all liens and other obligations on the lots that he's intending to take. And I just don't have enough background information to understand if, I don't know that the city has any interest in that. I think it's more of a homeowners association issue, and, but as Matt has explained to me, likely, the way this vote is structured, our not taking a vote would result in a no vote, which, if we don't care, and the residents generally are in favor, and we're voting no, and somehow that tips the scale to not getting enough votes, that could be a detriment to the vote. But I don't know that we have enough information as a city to weigh in on this one right off the bat.
So if I may, who currently owns 133 Forest Street?
So it's the original developers. It's Griswold.
So it's part of Stonegate already?
It's not the homeowners association, but it's owned by, it's owned by Griswold under a corporation name that includes the name Stonegate, but it has nothing really to do with the rest of the community and the homeowners association.
Okay, just so we know who the players are here. Okay. Yeah.
Well, I was just going to say, I think your choices are, you could authorize Tara to vote yes, no, abstain. You could potentially give her discretion as to how to vote based on the discussion.
Yeah, I think that would be, yeah.
You may want to.
Things could change in the discussion.
Yeah, yeah, I think that, since you may be able to get more information at the, at the HOA meeting, or prior, we could send an email as well, so that you and I could review something ahead of time as well.
Alderman, DePoy.
So the HOA, he's asking if the HOA relieve or release any liens against the properties that, which indicates to me, there must have been HOA fees, back fees on those, aside from the taxes owed to the city.
That's our best guess, yeah.
So, but they're undeveloped property, they're undeveloped lots.
Yes.
So as a, I guess I just, I'm failing to see how there would be HOA fees, like homeowners association, on undeveloped lots, because there's no homes, in a way I would think of it, as there's no homes on those lots. So why wouldn't there even be HOA fees on those?
So that's why I'm, I feel like I don't have enough information to say definitively what a global release of fees and liens would encompass. I know that there's been a couple of settlement agreements over time, and I don't know if there's anything incorporated to those that's, he's asking for release from. Again, I, like, that's why I feel uncomfortable advising and mistake it here, to take it a position at this point in time.
Thank you.
So what's your, what's your thinking here? So we could authorize Tara to vote yes, vote no, abstain, or just leave it to her discretion, depending on how the debate goes?
I'd say we make a motion to be neutral on that and have no opinion, I guess. I don't know. That's, because we don't, we don't know enough about this, I don't think. There's not a lot of background. I mean, I don't see how there's HOA fees on empty lots, to be honest with you, but.
I'm just concerned that, because she's got a weighted vote, because she has four lots, so her, she has a weighted vote, it could tip the scales if she goes the wrong way and they can't get anything done. That's my concern here.
That's why I'm saying if we stay neutral on it, you know, we can abstain.
I don't want her to stay neutral. I want her to be able to negotiate if she has to.
Feel comfortable directing her what to do?
Yeah, I feel very comfortable, yeah.
I'll make a motion.
Alderman, Tori.
Alderman Mattis had her hand up first.
Alderman Mattis.
I don't know if that was a motion that Alderman DePoy just made, but I move that we... we authorize Tara to vote as she sees would represent the benefit of the city on this item, this particular item.
Second? Is there any debate on that motion?
I just need to put disclaimer that some of the members of the board that down there are my family members, but I have no financial gain here, so I just want the board to be aware of that.
Thank you. We appreciate that. Anyone else have any debate on the motion to pretty much allow Tara to use her judgment to make the best decision based on the needs of the city? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. No pressure.
All right. Thank you. I'll report that to the executive.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have Commissioner Wenberg Digestor Project. Yes, no? Are we in executive session for that? I weren't sure.
No, only, I think only if we want to talk about the litigation. If we just take as fact that the litigation is driving the request and we don't need to talk about it, then it can be all discussed and the project itself and the need for the finances can be discussed in open, open session.
You're up.
Okay. So, you may recall that in your last meeting, you authorized the city treasurer to proceed as if needed in using funds other than the bond issues which are tied up in the litigation to allow a contract signing for the Forest Main project. And if I remember correctly, someone asked the question about the digester project and I said, "Oh, we'll be back." Well, we're back. And essentially, we are at the point with that one where we also have the bids open. We have a contractor that is qualified and we are in the same situation because the issue regarding the lawsuit has not been resolved. This one's a little more money. I believe the amount is $3.5 million that we're asking the board to authorize, the treasurer to, basically, the board to assure that the contract will be paid from other funds if necessary. And the amount is $3.5 million so that that contract can be signed and that contractor can get under contract. The plan for that one, however, is similar in that there would be no work done until spring. There may be some materials that would be purchased, but nothing that would require borrowing. And in the event that when contractor invoices start coming in, if we have not resolved the issue regarding the access to the bonds, then we would have to proceed with the interim financing, essentially the same as the Forest Main project. But this is a couple of million dollars more and on top of the amount, 1.5 million, I think it was for the last one. So, we are marching a little further out on a limb on this one. And that, looking over at the attorney and the treasurer, I think that's the heart of the request.
Alderman Gillen?
Yeah, I guess should be included in this as well. Don't see him, but he's, he's mhming from behind.
I'm going to give you a cash flow issue here. When is exactly you need to pay that?
Well, it would be over time. And this is, this would be a much longer project than the other one. The other one's a few months. This one would go on for the better part of a year. Mary did some analysis regarding some water projects in the past and we've floated, what was it?
Four, maybe.
Four months. Yeah, for like six months before invoices were reimbursed. So, it wouldn't begin until April, May, something like that. And then, we'd have monthly invoices which we would pay and then seek reimbursement, but sometimes those reimbursements can take four months, five months to come in. But we've always been able to handle that. This, however, there's no way there's that much money in the fund. In fact, if the Forest Main is done, then there would be essentially nothing in the fund for this. So, this would definitely involve interim finance borrowing in order to pay these bills if we're proceeding with the Forest Main. And the city treasurer's nodding, so it's my understanding is that this isn't something where borrowing may be necessary if we proceed down this path and we haven't resolved the bond issue. Borrowing, interim borrowing will absolutely be necessary for this.
Alderman Mattis?
What is the risk in not signing the contract?
Good question. Well, we've, we've, it's, in one respect, it's the same as the last one. That is that we would run the risk that there would be cost increases and it's reasonable to assume that there would be cost increases, at least on materials, if we rebid it in the spring. The other risk is that there were three bidders on this one. Two that were very, very close on the low end and then Beldon was actually the high bid on this one. The two bidders that were very close were Naylor and Breen from Brandon and Kingsbury, a name that may remind people. And Naylor and Breen is the low bidder, so we would be able to award it to Naylor and Breen as the low bidder for the base bid if we had the assurance that the financing would be available.
Alderman.
If we didn't do that, we'd have to reject all bids and rebid it.
I'll say. Alderman, turn.
So, why aren't we taking a similar tact as we did two weeks ago with buying materials first and then proceeding?
We may do that on this one as well.
Similar question to that. And you may have answered this before. Why are we so positive the material costs will be up in the spring?
That's what all the engineers and the vendors are telling us. There's a lot of steel in this and they're expecting steel prices to go up. These digester covers are fabricated and they're all steel and.
So, do we have a rough estimate as to what those material costs are if we were to buy them now?
I think we did have an estimate on that, but I don't, I could go see if I could find it. I believe Weston and Sampson did produce an estimate. On this one, it was several hundred thousand dollars. I vaguely remember around $300,000, but I'm not sure if that's absolutely correct.
I guess like my, two weeks ago, it was a very firm plan of this is what we're doing and this is why we're doing it with the materials and then now it doesn't seem like it's the same plan. I'm just wondering why the difference.
It's essentially the same. The reasons for it and why it's important to do it now are different from the Forest Main. And this project isn't as time sensitive from an emergency repair basis. This was never intended to be done in the, in the fall now. This is always going to be a 2020 construction season project. But unlike the other one, we went out to bid on this one with, operating with the assumption that the issue relative to the bond issue would be resolved by the time we had to award the bid and it has not been. And so, the choices really are reject all bids, which doesn't cost us anything except the risk associated with higher prices and not knowing who the successful bidder would be, or who the bidders, in fact, would be come spring if we were to do it over again.
Alderman, turn.
Is there an impact, like on the last one, is there an impact on the funding mechanism at all? We're rooted, you know, we can benefit by doing it now?
This one is also different in that regard in that this is the project that has been grandfathered under the old, three years ago, the legislature got rid of it, but will be the last project that's grandfathered under that. And that's $1.5 million grant to support this project, which is huge. We have done everything required to make sure that that is set and that we've met the deadlines. And at this point, my understanding from conversations with state funding officials and also bond counsel, that we're quite comfortable that that funding is secure regardless of whether we approve it now or whether we don't approve it now and go ahead and rebid it. The 1.5 million, I think we've got locked down as close as we can under the circumstances.
So, if we choose to do anything, we need to suspend the rules and then we would.
The city attorney would probably want me to add, because he implored me to do this before, that in the event, highly unlikely that it is that the legislature in the course of the next legislative session doing their budget, were to change their mind and devote that money to something else because we hadn't been awarded it, they legally could take it away. I think the risk of that, as long as we're continuing with our good faith efforts to complete this project and if there's a need to communicate to them for the reasons why it is on its current schedule, that, I think there's really essentially no risk that that would happen. But the authority is there and if they chose to do that, they could do that. If we were to sign the contract now, I don't think that, I think at that point, I don't think they could do it because we would have taken an action depending, depending upon that, that would be, I don't know, that's a legal question really, but typically, if you go to something like that, then it's much, much harder for them to change the rules after the fact. But I don't think that they can, can, they can do it. I don't believe that they would do that. I think that would be almost unimaginable that they would do that unless we've abandoned the project.
Alderman Mattis?
It sounds like we're just weighing risks.
Exactly.
And to me, the risk is greater to, you know, look at the change in the price of steel. To me, that's the greater risk. That's where I'm at.
So, we're moving for, yes?
Just on that, just if it helps anybody, in a discussion that I had with the engineers, I had asked what the, what his estimate was, if it were to be rebid. And he felt like based on the size of the project, that it would likely be a couple hundred thousand dollar increase. Both, there's a small amount to actually rebid it of the engineer services to do all the paperwork, but then taking into effect, or taking into account the, the materials and other factors, his best guess would be, it would be a couple hundred thousand dollars on top of, because it was a three and a half million dollar project.
Thanks for that, Matt. Actually, so, Mary, in the worst case scenario that that lawsuit dragged on and we had to borrow, how long would it take for the interest to outpace the extra we'd have to pay in a bid?
I'm not sure, but I think that because the project is over two years, I mean, it's, this project isn't happening right away, starting, so I think the cash flow will be slower than the Forest Main. So, I think it would be a long time before we reach 200,000 in interest at two and a half percent for, you know, bond anticipation.
Thank you.
So, what's your pleasure? We'd have to suspend the rules. Motion to suspend the rules.
Second?
All those in favor suspending the rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Do we have an appropriate motion? Just to authorize?
Yes, it would be to, trying to think what we used last time, to authorize the, did we do award the bid last time? Was that?
I believe we did. I'm trying to find my, the minutes to see.
Some we authorized.
It was a special, it was a special meeting, though.
Right. I don't have them.
Let's see.
President City Treasurer? I think that's what it was. Board of Finance can award the bid once the financing is backed up.
Let's go with authorize the use, I guess maybe this is a question for the treasurer. We specified, I think, in the last motion that it would come from the Water and Sewer Fund, but do you want me to just make a general?
A general, I think it should all come from the sewer fund, yeah.
Okay.
Based on our needs.
Okay. So, it would be authorization to use funds from the Water and Sewer Fund to assure the completion of the digester project.
So, move.
Second? Any debate on that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Okay. We are under reports of standing committees. Finance Committee, Alderman, turn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Finance Committee met on September 17th, 2019 to discuss the LAS FY '20 budget. I served as chair. Other committee members present were Alderman Humphrey, Reveal, and Whitcomb. Other Aldermen present were Board President Davis and Alderman Mattis. Others present, Mayor Lehrer, Treasurer Markowski, City Attorney Blumer, and from LAS, John Santinello, Director of Operations, Ray LaMoria, our local LAS operations manager, and Louis Hendricks, the general manager for the region for LAS. The meeting convened at 5:35 PM to review the proposed FY '20 budget for the operation of the parking garage. John Santinello discussed the previous year's revenues and expenses and noted that had a payment come in earlier, this year would have been the first year with this positive net income. He attributed most of that to the new contract that was negotiated with the city and the state, or between the city and the state. Additionally, he said that with new people in the state at BGS, there's a better working relationship between LAS and BGS. LAS is planning to discuss the structural conditions of the facility as well as negotiate some of the expenses related to snow plowing the area of the facility that the state leases to the bus. John noted the two main expenses on the budget are the upkeep and maintenance of the pay stations and the snow plowing. One expense that they are going to investigate more deeply is the propane and what areas the propane is used to heat. During this discussion, it was noted that the hall containing the garage, the hall connecting the garage to Center Street is one area that deserves attention. Ray LaMoria noted that he would like it to be in a more welcoming condition and Alderman Humphrey noted that it is not currently ADA accessible. It was unclear who owns or controls that area. In regards to staffing, Ray mentioned that he tries to be proactive with providing staffing when Paramount shows are happening to provide, help provide a better, a more positive customer experience and to help reduce wait times when they leave. On the revenue side, LAS noted an increase in validations with True Yoga opening at the former Salvation Army building. They are hopeful that other businesses will take advantage of this. Besides for being a service to customers, it also helps drive new traffic into the garage so people could have a positive experience there and choose to utilize it in the future. Monthly pass holders, monthly pass holder numbers continue to hold steady indicating that those who use the garage find that it works well for them. It was noted that we have not increased prices for transient parkers or for monthly pass holders since the city took over the management of the garage. The committee agreed that it was important for LAS to continue to work with businesses and organizations like the Paramount to help drive additional traffic into the parking garage. And you'll see the budget attached to your packet on the back. With $265,000 in budgeted revenues and $259,000 in budgeted expenses, LAS is predicting a slight surplus for the FY '20 budget. Alderman Humphrey moved for the approval of LAS's FY '20 budget as presented. The motion passed 4-0 and I so move.
Second? Debate on the motion to approve the LAS budget for fiscal year '20? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Alderman, turn. Are there any other standing committee reports? Select committee reports, representatives? Okay. We're moving on. We have a special events permit request from the Rutland County Humane Society coin drop for October 12th from 10 to 12 on Merchant's Row. I only issue his here. I don't know if you, I've only got one sheet of paper. I don't have insurance and stuff.
If I may, the attorney was looking to sign off. Make sure the secretary was getting signatures.
Okay.
We just looked to get that ahead. I believe the attorney is all signed off and it is good to go.
Okay. Alderman Mattis?
Motion to suspend the rules?
Second?
All those in favor suspending the rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Alderman Mattis?
I move we approve the special event permit application for the Rutland County Humane Society coin drop, October 12th from 10 to 2 on Merchant's Row.
Second?
Is there anyone here from the Humane Society that would like to speak on the issue? All right. We voted. Now, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those, motion carries. Thank you. Alderman Gillen voted no. Alderman Gillum voted no. Okay. So next to is Green Mountain Power pole and wire request for Green Hills Lane. We'll note Alderman Humphrey's abstention. What's your pleasure? We need to suspend the rules? Yo.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor suspending the rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Alderman Mattis.
I'm not clear on what the motion should be. Is it circulate for signature?
Going to move to approve, well, these, this is looking for...
Signature.
Signatures. Authorize the clerk to sign?
Authorize the DPW commissioner to sign.
Okay. So the motion would be to authorize the Commissioner of Public Works to sign? Nope. He's shaking his head. Anybody want it?
These are normally reviewed by one of the folks in the engineering. Has that been, I haven't seen this before, so it doesn't, I don't have to see it, but if it hasn't been reviewed, I would request that the board refer it for review, and then we'd bring it back once the...
He did sign off on it.
He did sign off on it? Okay, then it should be fine. Then it should be fine.
So the motion to authorize the commissioner to sign.
So move.
Second.
Any debate on the motion to authorize the commissioner to sign? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I just want to stop. Folks, are you looking to be on the agenda? Okay, because anyone overlooked you. And I...
I think it was a case of mistaken...
Okay, that's fine. I didn't, I just didn't want to forget you if something was, before we get moving here. All right, good. So we need a motion to go into the Board of Control Commissioners.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. First up, it's a third-class liquor request, the venue. We need to circulate for signature.
Madam President, just so the board knows, the state of Vermont has now asked the clerk to take over the duties for third-class licenses. It's something the board has never had to do before, but they felt that they would want to get town approval or city approval in regards. So normally, we take care of this, as you know, as a housekeeping measure, usually in February. These entities decided when they got to third class, because it's so expensive, they'd only did a six-month permit. So now there's, there are the six months coming due, which will expire on April 30th. So that's why we have a couple third-class requests that are out there. But you will see in February, all of them will be coming. So we'll be doing first, second, third, outside consumption, entertainment permit requests when I give these folks later on in the new year.
Alderman Torrey.
Just a question on third class. I don't know.
What is third class?
Third class is hard liquor.
Okay.
First class would be beer and wine, and second class is your packaged stores, so it's the take beer and wine.
Sure. Okay. So usually, we do this once a year with, in that February.
Normally, we do it once a year with the first and second, but the state of Vermont is now requiring that...
Oh, for third. Okay.
Third class now looking for the commissioners to make sure that they're okay with that.
That wasn't common.
Just curious, is there a representative of the venue here tonight?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alderman Humphrey, sorry.
Thank you. So there's two of these in here. So when I first saw these, and Alderman Reveal just explained a little bit too, when I first saw these, I thought they were late, or they forgot, or whatever. But, so it sounds like they're on the six-month plan or whatever. Are we anticipating any more, or are these the only two that do this?
There, I received, I believe, four from the state to date. This is the only two that I have gotten back. Their licenses will expire on November 1st.
Got it, okay.
So they have one more meeting, the other two folks that are going to go out there have one more meeting to get this third-class license in.
So these get them from November 1st to April 30th?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Gillum.
Just to back the clerk up, this was a rule change by the department as of July 1st, the fiscal year of the state. So now, we're going to start approving third class on top of first.
And Alderman Reveal will be abstaining.
I'm abstaining.
And he abstains because he is a owner of a liquor license.
He can't vote, yeah.
So the first one is Union Jack's Pub. The motion would be to circulate for signature. Right?
The venue.
Venue.
Oh, did I put that one down? Oh, I must have picked a different one up. I'm sorry, the venue.
The motion is circulate for signature.
Second. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The next one is a third-class liquor license request, Union Jack's Pub. Same thing.
Motion to circulate for signature.
Second. All those in favor of circulating for signature, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. All right. Next up is first-class liquor license request for the Downtown Gentlemen's Salon. This would also be to circulate for signature, and I believe Lori is here and has been sitting patiently through all of our debates.
Is that a motion?
These are pages nine through 14.
Yeah.
This is a motion we would circulate for signature.
Motion to circulate for signature.
This is a first-class liquor license request.
Madam President, I'm abstaining on this one.
Well, I'll second. Okay. Is there any discussion? Lori, is there anything you need to say? Are you comfortable with this? All those in favor, well, we're going to circulate for signature. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. The next one is an outside consumption request for the Downtown Gentlemen's Salon. Also, Lori.
They just motioned to have the clerk sign off? Motion, yeah, motion for the clerk to sign them.
We have an abstention from Alderman Tomala. Is there any other debate on the motion to authorize the clerk to sign? This is the outside consumption permit.
Good second.
Oh, Matt, sorry.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. And lastly, we have an entertainment permit request, Tasso's Restaurant Center Street.
Motion for the clerk to sign.
Second.
And, yes, Alderman Torrey.
Motion to approve the request with the condition that all signatures are collected prior to the clerk signing. Just giving the permit.
For Tasso's?
For Tasso's.
Okay. Any debate on that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. We need a motion to go out of the Board of Control Commissioners.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. We are under unfinished business. Thank you, Lori. We have the Rutland Regional Com, excuse me, Planning Commission representatives. So we have Regional Board of Commissioners, we have our representatives as Mayor Lair and Alderman Melinda Humphrey. So if we could suspend the rules and just, I, I don't know if we need to suspend the rules.
This is just housekeeping measures. These are representatives that get approved by the board once a year, usually the same votes, they kind of go around and stuff. Their end of year is around July, and I just received those, and that's what happened, but they asked to have them designated again. And that's just a matter of preparing those designations. It's just the board can just approve those representatives.
Right. And authorize the clerk to sign. So first, we have the Regional Board of Commissioners, which is Mayor Lair and Alderman Humphrey.
Motion to authorize clerk to sign.
Second. All those, any debate on those motions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. And then we have the Rutland Region Transportation Council, which is Mayor Lair and Alderman Gillum.
Do we have resumes and social security numbers, all that stuff?
No, I don't want to see it.
I think we want to see that, especially...
Never show you my social security number.
Tax returns.
Tax returns. So do we have a motion to approve Mayor Lair and...
Motion to authorize the clerk to sign?
Okay.
Oh, a motion to authorize the chair to sign.
Is there any debate on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. All right, so...
Just Henry is not...
Hold on here. We are under miscellaneous motions, resolutions, new business. We do have executive session. Is there any miscellaneous, Alderman etor?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This past Wednesday, there was a meeting at the library held by the Boston Federal Reserve, Bank of Boston Federal Reserve, whatever it is, about this working communities grants. There was a working cities challenge, and then they've expanded to the area. So I expect Brennan will talk more about it at RRA tomorrow, but I would encourage everybody to keep their eyes and ears open for this. The idea of the grant is that it's supposed to be collaborative, and so this might be an opportunity for us to work together in the region towards some goal. So there's going to be some work going, going forward on that. I assume that from the city, Brennan will be kind of driving that piece, but just keep your eyes and ears open, because it's an opportunity for about $300,000 every year for a sizable grant.
Is there any other miscellaneous motions, resolutions, new business? If not, I have one thing before we go into executive session. I want to share with the board, because I think you should be aware that an alderman chose to meet with Mr. Dido, who we are in litigation with. So what I'm looking for is just for you to think about that, and whether or not that's something you're comfortable with, or whether or not that is something going forward if an alderman chooses to make that step, take that step. I spoke with the alderman in question, and I stated very clearly that I objected, and my reasons why. I believe that the city attorney also spoke with the alderman in question and stated his objections and reasons why. So if we have a big discussion with this, about this, I think it should be in executive session if we get into any debates about the conversation. But I want you to think about, is that something that you, as a board member, if someone has the desire to do that against advice, is it something that you want to weigh in? So that's something I'd like you to think about. The other thing is the violation of executive session. It was a violation of executive session. It was actually confirmed by our Herald reporter that the reason he reached out to Alderman Tomala in his first series of articles in the Herald was because it was shared with him that he was the most vocal in executive session. Now, there was some discussion that it wasn't violated, because when we came out of executive session, we talked about it. I don't recall doing that. So I checked the minutes, and I believe when we came out of executive session, otherwise than authorizing the engineering type of thing, we took no other action, went home. So I would like to say that, are you going to go to alderman jail? No, there isn't one. Okay? Do you get fined legally? No. I'm going to finish, Alderman etor. Do you get fined legally? No. I believe it is a moral and ethical judgment that we all have to make. We cannot sit in these chairs and represent the city when we don't, when we raise our right hand and say, I swear to do A, B, and C. We cannot request that the mayor be transparent when we are not, we are not honoring executive session. Why would we ask department heads and/or mayors to share information with us if there is not a level of trust between us and the administration? So I'd like you to all think about that as we go into executive session. Okay? Alderman etor.
Thank you. Madam Chair, after that, after the discussion that you're talking about in executive session, there was a public motion made by myself, seconded by Alderman Tomala, to deny the proposal that was in executive session. On top of that, Alderman Tomala asked for a roll call vote. It can be inferred that Alderman Tomala had a reason to ask for a roll call vote. That was in public session. Second of all, any alderman is welcome to talk to any other person in the world that they're allowed to. There is not a rule that we sign that we cannot talk to someone because the chair doesn't want us to. So I respectfully reject the statement that one alderman shouldn't talk to anybody else in the world because you don't like it. Thank you.
I'm not sure that was my statement, Alderman etor. My statement was that we don't get...
What's more disappointing is we talked in private, and this is what you had to do in public, so I appreciate that.
You have a motion to go into executive session?
So move.
We'll have Matt read us something.
The motion is to find that premature general public knowledge regarding the negotiation of a contract would clearly place the city at a substantial disadvantage because the discussion would divulge the board's position on the contract provisions to be negotiated.
So move.
Second.
Any debate on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. And the second motion?
Motion to enter into executive session with the inclusion of the mayor, recreation superintendent, director of maintenance, treasurer, and city attorney to discuss the negotiation of a contract as allowed under Title I, Section 313A1A.
So move.
Second.
Any debate on that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Just stand down until we clear the room.